Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's county council meeting. We will start with our invocation. Pastor Ronald Boyer from New Valley Baptist Church is here to pray for us tonight. Thanks for coming. And Councilman Joe Brazel will lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll stand and remove your caps, please.
Pastor.
First of all, let me say, councilmen and residents of St. Charles County and distinguished guests, it's an honor and a privilege to be here with you tonight. And I'd like to admonish us in Scripture as we begin. Proverbs 29:2 says, "When the righteous are in authority, the people rejoice; but when the wicked rule, the people mourn." Having said that, let's go to the Lord in prayer. Father, I pray tonight for this distinguished body of the St. Charles County Council, Lord. I pray for their direction and guidance. Give those in authority wisdom in every decision and help them think clearly tonight, Lord. Grant them discernment and common sense so they'll be strong and effective leaders. Help them to lead and govern with integrity, Lord, and may the integrity guide them and keep them on track. Be merciful to them, Lord, and guide them by your principles, Lord, of righteousness and justice. Direct their steps according to your word, for their decisions have great impact on the lives of the residents of St. Charles County. Be their defender, be their protector, Lord, and always guard them. Encourage them with strength, Father, giving them wisdom they need, and help them to have courage and faith no matter what they're facing day to day. And I pray tonight that everything would be done in decency and order, and those bringing business before this council tonight will be slow to speak, slow to anger, and quick to listen. And we pray this in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Call the robe.
Councilmember Joe Cronin.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Brazel.
Here.
Councilmember Dave Hammond.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Ilum.
Here.
Councilmember Terry Hollander.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Klinghammer.
Here.
Councilmember John White.
Here.
We have a public presentation tonight. Scott Trochnick has graced us with his presence tonight from Workforce Development, and we are going to talk about manufacturing. Hello, Scott.
Counsel, thank you for letting me be here. Scott Trochnick, St. Charles County Workforce Business Development and Missouri Job Center of St. Charles County. Now, tonight, I could be talking about the fact that we've got a 3.2 unemployment rate, which is the lowest in the region, but I'm not. And I could be talking about the Summer Job League, where we've got 40 positions to fill for young adults, 16 to 24, from St. Charles County, from low-income families, where they could earn $2,000 and learn great job skills over the next couple of months. But that's not why I'm here. Basically, let me off at the beginning, thank all the folks who've come out tonight to hear about the manufacturing update. It's such a large crowd.
We're big into manufacturing here.
We were supposed to do it a month ago. They waited, and I appreciate that. For the last two months, we've had a nine-word message that we've been getting out around the community and actually to a state board, and that is, "Manufacturing is alive and well in St. Charles County." And we've got a report that we wanted to show you. First off, as you can see it there, and I've placed it at your tables, it looks like this. Most people don't realize that manufacturing in St. Charles County employs the largest number of folks and the highest wages in our area. It's over a billion dollars' worth of wages that are paid out to workers in manufacturing in St. Charles County. And under that, you have to go a couple of layers down before you get to healthcare and some of the other areas that we would think of. And actually, today, more than 16,000 people work in manufacturing, which is a larger number than did a decade ago. So all the talk about plants closing up and moving south of the border or overseas is not exactly what's been happening in our part of the community. Well, we had a regional task force that was put together through Workforce Development, and we reached out to the 300 or so manufacturers in the community with a quick little survey. It had 12 questions, so it would take them five minutes, try to figure out some basic information, and helped open some doors for us to communicate with the manufacturers in the area. 20% responded, so we heard back from 60 of those manufacturers. And overall, what we found was that it was a good response rate of companies that were both large and small. We had a percentage of companies, I think it's shown right there, that 37% had five to 24 employees, and we had 27% that had over 100 employees. And actually, about 10% of the respondents had over 500. So we had the mom-and-pop shops all the way up to the global giants. What we did find out was that in terms of hiring, they were very optimistic. They had been hiring the last 24 months, and looking ahead, they were hiring in terms of what they foresee. And we were able to figure out from them what would be some of the top areas where they are looking to fill positions that they're creating in our community. And it was everything from workforce and shipping to welding. We also could see that there's quality assurance, CNC machining, assembly production, and even sales. And so we had a good swath across the industry of what manufacturers are looking for. And to almost every one of them was saying, "We can't find enough people." We also asked them what were some of the specific training needs that they had, and you can see on what's on the screen and on the inside of your report, that they told us some key things. CNC machining, a program called SolidWorks, blueprint reading, forklift, those were some of the key things in welding, some of the key things that they were saying, "We need more skills training, we need more opportunity to get folks experienced in those areas." The neat part about this task force, rather than it just being a bunch of answers and we put it on the shelf to gather dust, in our task force, we had Rankin, we had Lewis and Clark, we had folks from the State Technical School, we had the St. Charles Community College. So we had the educators in the room hearing the answers either from the surveys or from the focus groups or from the meetings that we held with these folks that are in the area. We came up with some specific recommendations. That's the insert that's in the four-page brochure that Mary Inger and her team did a great job laying this out and giving it a nice look, so plug for Mary and the communications team. But we had two pages, front and back, and that was in terms of training opportunities and targeted outreach. And then we broke it down further because we knew that some of this needs to be for the existing business community, some of these recommendations need to be for the education of elected officials, and some need to be for the existing and future workforce. And so these are workable recommendations that our team and our department and other groups, like the EDC and the Chambers and many other groups, are working on to try to bring to fruition in St. Charles County. But the other thing that we realized in the midst of doing the surveys, in the midst of doing the interviews and the focus groups and the meetings, we weren't the only ones working on this problem, and we never are. And so there has been local momentum even since last summer when we started this effort. The CAPS program, as some of you have seen in news releases, in news reports, or talking with educators, is coming to St. Charles County. And so that's going to open up some new training and full immersion of juniors and seniors in high school into the business environment, into governmental options as well, to help them learn about things like engineering and healthcare and entrepreneurship and other things that will help them go further in college or in their career, depending on which path they want to go for. We also, in the last couple of months, saw the community college purchase the remaining portion of that building where they have been leasing from Lindenwood out on Highway 40 on Interstate 64, the One Barrett Academy location. And they are going to be expanding their medical training, but also bringing technical training over time to that facility. IT, logistics, welding, and even an agribusiness course that they're working out with Troy Buchanan High School because there's such a need for that. So they're getting further into the technical training model as well in the community. We also saw that Rankin is not sitting still. They've not only expanded in the last two years out in Wentzville, but they were the first group in our area to get the U.S. Department of Labor to approve an apprenticeship program that they have there for advanced manufacturing technology. It's one of many that's going to be happening either through us, the community college, or Rankin or others in the area. Also, many people don't realize, State Technical College is here in St. Charles County. They took over the facility's maintenance building on the campus of Lewis and Clark School over off of Zumbell, and they actually have a training program that it's almost sort of Rankin Lite, but they have about 40 students that are being immersed and tuition-subsidized by manufacturers that are desperate for these folks to come out with the skills and the soft skills, hard and soft skills, so that they can walk into, right now, $15-an-hour jobs all the way up to 20 and 25. And if those students play their cards right, they have no tuition when they're done with their training, and it's a certified training program. And then lastly, over at the EDC, they've also been trying to move the ball, and about a month or two back, they brought in a group called Inventor Forge Makerspace. That's a neat place where you can take an idea, turn it into fruition. I think I've got the three-minute bell or maybe more than that. Keith, can I go longer than three minutes? Just checking. So Inventor Forge is there doing cool things with 3D printers, with all kinds of equipment, and they not only work with wannabe entrepreneurs, but are having workshops and conferences in the evenings and on the weekends so that students, high school or college, can come in and figure out that making stuff is cool, being an entrepreneur is a neat road to go. And so I want to thank you for the opportunity to come and give the message, as again we've been doing, to school districts, to civic groups, even to a state board, that manufacturing is alive and well in St. Charles County, and we'd like to keep it that way. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Do you guys have... Anybody have any questions or comments?
You know, Scott, are they training... You said you go to talk to schools and stuff. Are they training the high school kids that having a good work job, a union job, or a construction job, or a factory job is a good thing, and that we need to build our workforce or kids just don't know how to work these days?
I heard a bell again. I think my time is up. Well, I've got four millennials at home, two slightly used. If anybody's interested, let me know. We could make a deal. I'm getting a good reception wherever we've been talking. At one of the school boards, as we talked about this, one of the gentlemen said, "I work at a tool and die shop, and I've been there for 40 years, and it's been a great job for me. It's been fulfilling. I've got a nice house, my kids are through college, and we need more folks to realize that." The idea that it's high school one and done or college one and done, that's over. That's not the model anymore. And there are a variety of career paths, and I don't care whether you go into the trades, technical, IT, the military, career path with college, whatever it is, as soon as you're done, you better get ready to go back because this is a global economy and things are moving fast. And so, yes, we've got folks that can be great in the trades and the technical skills. Computerization is all over the place, and so just as the factories didn't close up and the jobs didn't all go away, they're not all these dark, dirty, dingy places that you don't want to go to. I've been in factories, and some of you as well, in St. Charles County, where it's as clean as an operating room, where they are making things that are changing people's lives around the world with surgical instruments or whatnot. And so are there still some places that maybe are dark and dingy and pay eight or nine bucks? Yes, but the bulk of it is something else, and we're trying to get kids involved in that. Parents to see it, guidance counselors to see it, moms and dads to realize it's a viable option. And so that's why we're also working on Manufacturing Day events. There's going to be a series of those, late September, early October, and with the indulgence of the county exec and the commission, we'll be bringing in somebody to honor, as you guys have been doing, Manufacturing Day and to recognize another manufacturer.
Very good. Any other...
Thank you, Scott.
All right. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you so much.
We appreciate it. We'll move on to public comments. Now, normally on public comments, we do three for, three against on any particular subject. Last time, I made a decision to suspend the rules, and I was reminded after that that that's not within my power to suspend the rules, that that's a council decision, not a chairman decision. So I apologize to the council members for doing that unilaterally last time. So I would entertain a motion, if you want to do so, to suspend the rules. Otherwise, we will stick with our normal rules.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second. There's a motion made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
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 Roll.
I'm Terry.
I'll say yes. So that way, it's four to three.
Just for clarification, I've got Joe Cronin, Dave Hammond. Who was the other?
Terry.
Okay, thank you.
Here's the only request that I would make, and I did this in the last one, and you guys were very mature about this whole thing, and I really appreciate it. If someone's going to stand up and make a point that you are going to make, with all due respect, that point's been made, so we don't need it made again. I appreciate that. With all due respect to the gentleman who speaks professionally for a living, I understand that you're really good, but if someone else makes that point, go with me on that one. That's a request that I'm making. So that's the only thing. All right, Carol, fire us up with speaker number one for tonight.
All right, and these are all on the building codes, 4475 TC herring.
Good evening, gentlemen. It's really good to be with you again. I look forward to it.
Hey, Terry, I don't want to cut you off. Can you move over in front of that microphone? Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Appreciate it. That works much better.
I'm speaking on behalf of the Missouri Patriot Group, and again, against 4475. I'm still questioning, where is the driving force behind this? Because we have a request by Mr. Hurlbert. Was there a needs analysis done? And if there was, can we see it? Number two, this is a very expansive change. It would be helpful for those who are going to be impacted by it to know what exists now and what changes, particularly since there's retroactivity in this bill. What does that do to us? This, watching the process over the last several months, it has been one of fixing this got you, fixing that got you, and when you tried to take 8,000 pages and condense it into 168, something's amiss. So where is all of this coming from? We have the issue of misdemeanors. While it's been reduced to $500, it's every day that you're in noncompliance. Why is this a criminal issue, particularly with regard to residents? Also, in the United Nations, the Section 104.3 of residential codes, right to access to the facility, that's a right that even our police officers don't have. And while I find it interesting, in the residential section, we skip from Section 104 to 105, there is no statement of deletion of that section. This is still a solution in search of a problem, and I again urge the council to put this thing to bed now by voting against it, and let us take a real serious look at what really needs to be done and what critical issues are being taken care of. We just haven't heard it, and the residents of St. Charles County are the people who are affected, and we're the ones who have the least amount of word. I thank you for your attention. I did leave a piece of correspondence with Ms. Miller to be shared with you. It's called "The Doctrine of Completed Staff Work." I think you'll find it interesting. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Bill Davis.
Mr. Davis. I hope your Funny Bone appearance went well, by the way.
Thank you. I just throw in my two cents on technical education. We do it backward. First thing you ought to do is go blow something up, then come back and talk about the gas laws and chemical reactions and that sort of thing. You've got a little bit of gut feeling for it then. I've seen it twice before. Once I talked about the folly of micromanaging, and second, I tried to talk about the consumer paying for everything. I don't think you're not going to approve this. Tailwinds are with you, and you're going to approve it. I'd like to talk about public exposure. Now, we've got the Board of Adjustment for Planning and Zoning. Go get relief. Now, if you go to the Board of Adjustment and you say, "I'm going to want to push my building back 35 foot, I want to buy $3 million worth of equipment, I want to hire six machinists for $70,000 a year, and I want a quarter of a million dollars probably for myself," they'll do this. Get down, get down, get us through it in state. They won't listen to you at all. They only honor a hardship, like Grandma fell down, broke her leg, needed to build a ramp. That needs to change. That's a state statute. There's no reason in the world why you can't give people relief on that sort of thing. Then secondly, you need to do the same thing for building requirements. Requirement for stairs in a department store is one thing. Stairs with a Chinese restaurant is an entirely different thing. There needs to be some board you can go to to get some relief on that sort of thing. And thirdly, the same thing with engineering. You build a little water gardens out in O'Fallon that's impervious soil, none of it's going to leak into the aquifer. Just totally dumb damn thing to do. So I would ask that, that's one, two, three. Fourth, I'd like to see some mechanism in there where the city's correspondence on buildings, drawings, and so forth goes on the internet relative to that building. So when they come out with 267 things wrong with the site plan, they go on the internet, I can blast out $500 with a Facebook ads and say, "Hey, guys, look at this." So whatever you do, I think public exposure, and at least the people will have a chance to maybe take some action and come back and say, "Hey, this is crazy. We're not going to do it." I'm Bill Davis. I'm going to skip out on you because it's Funny Bone comedy contest, it's Westport Funny Bone tonight, and I just can't miss it. But thank you, thank you for spending this time with me, and think about blowing up something first, then figuring out why it happened. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. We wish you all the best of luck tonight.
Marcia Bear.
Marcia, you are up.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name's Marcia Bear from Augusta. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. This afternoon, I was in contact with a few members of the Republican National Committee from across our country, specifically Representative Paul Reynolds from Alabama. He was part of a resolution issued by the Republican National Committee in 2012. Mr. Reynolds has sent me an email stating, "Resolutions are not issued by the RNC without a thorough vetting process." Basically, the RNC places its credibility on the line each time it passes a resolution. Therefore, we, as the Resolutions Committee, can emphatically say, "Our resolution concerning the dangers of Agenda 21 are factual and trustworthy, and that it is backed by the full RNC." I would like to read just a few of the sections from that resolution dated January 12th of 2012. Whereas the United Nations Agenda 21 is being covertly pushed into local communities throughout the United States through the International Council of Local Environmental Initiatives, ICLE, through local sustainable development policies such as smart growth, resilient cities, regional visioning projects reminiscent of the Master Plan 2025, and other green or alternative projects. Let it be resolved, the Republican National Committee recognizes the destructive and insidious nature of United Nations Agenda 21 and hereby exposes the public and public policymakers to the dangerous intent of the plan. I would ask that each of you read the email from Mr. Reynolds and also from Republican National Committee member Carolyn McLarty from Oklahoma, and I have a copy of the resolution exposing Agenda 21 for each of the council members and Mr. Elman. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brenda Webb.
Ms. Webb.
Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you for listening to us again. As you can tell, we are pretty sincere and fervent about this issue, and I sincerely hope that you do vote no on this thing and, you know, either go back to the drawing board or fix the ones that were already there or something. I mean, we just really believe they're dangerous, and, you know, as Marcia pointed out, so does the RNC. I have several points I wanted to bring up. One is the right of entry. I do agree that that's egregious. It is a violation, I believe, of the Fourth Amendment of our U.S. Constitution for unlawful search and seizure without a proper warrant. So that needs to come out. The misdemeanor, I'm totally against that as well. I think it's criminal to charge someone with a crime for having peeling paint. And if that's not your intention, and you think, "Oh, you know, we're never going to do it for that," then write it that way. It's wrong for that to be in there that way. And today, as it just happens, this morning at work, I got an email from our HR department stating that, "In order to comply with certain requirements of our insurance partners, our policy regarding self-disclosure of convictions currently contained in the personnel policy summary has been updated to require self-reporting of both misdemeanor and felonies." So now, you're talking about affecting somebody's livelihood if you charge them with a misdemeanor for peeling paint. It's just wrong. It's wrong. And I've got a copy, I've taken off, you know, the name of the company because I don't want to bring that in, but it's clearly from the HR department. This is very serious. You can't charge people crimes for things like that. I did send an email, and I kind of spelled out the... Last week, I think, you know, we are not against holding people accountable at all. But I think, for residents especially, it should be a warning letter. And if you start out with that already, great. But then take out all that stuff that you're not ever intending to apply. It's wrong. And, you know, if there is somebody earning a living, a builder or contractor who's being paid to produce code-compliant work, okay, hold their feet to the fire. I don't think they should get a misdemeanor and a $500 fine and a year in jail or whatever the first time either. You know, there needs to be some grace, because everybody makes mistakes. As Mr. Klinghammer pointed out in the ad hoc meeting, everybody makes mistakes. And so, you know, we need to work with people, not beat them over the head. I mean, it's just, I don't know, it's wrong. Okay, so I also have several emails here.
Sorry, but that is your time for this evening. So I appreciate you coming to speak.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Kathy Lenahan.
Mine is not on the building codes. It's on a non-agenda item.
Ah, okay. We'll hold you for later. How's that?
Thank you.
Thank you. That's why Carol's here.
Hi.
Hi, Cindy.
I'm Cindy Evans. I live in O'Fallon, and I speak in opposition to the proposal. For a very long time, the United Nations has been working quietly, behind the scenes, covertly, to destroy or to end all national sovereignty. Examples would include the United Nations Convention on the Rights of the Child, which is 1994, the Law of the Sea Treaty, 1982, and the environmental issues such as Agenda 21, the first round of which was, I believe, implemented here in 2009. I have a question. Are we part of the United States of America or not? Is St. Charles County County Council part of the United States of America or not? Do we believe we are a free and sovereign people and nation or not? Or are we just another piece of the big global control community envisioned by the United Nations? I don't know all the details, and I have not read every page of the document or the original document, but I do understand the law of unintended consequences. This feels like the proverbial camel's nose under the tent to me. If this is approved, what comes next? When and where does it stop? It seems to me, if we want to be and remain Americans, if we want to have control of our own communities, our county, our state, our nation, then on principle alone, we should say no to this whole thing once and for all and be done with it. And I would add, we should, you should repeal or rescind the 2009 vote which led to this in the first place. Please vote no on this proposal and on any future similar proposals. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy.
Last time I was here, it was ladies on the council. Now, I see the council's changed. I'm here to speak against 4475. I'd like to remind you that this is a country that's of the people, by the people, for the people. You were elected and put in those chairs by the individuals sitting out here. And those who choose not to attend this meeting tonight, who are very not much aware of what's going on with Agenda 21, I think you men need to educate yourself to Agenda 21. Under Agenda 21, it tells you that property is a very... Under Agenda 21, it tells you that property is a very important issue to wealth. If you own property, you're rich. This code is a violation of the Fourth Amendment, my right and everybody else's right to property. You feel that you have the right to come in and tell us how we should live our life. Remember, you were elected by the people sitting in this room and in the county. You're here to represent us. You're not here to represent ICLE or anything that has to do with the United Nations. Building codes, they can be good and they can be bad. They protect the contractor, they protect the consumer. But the building code is starting to get out of hand. When you can walk on people's property into designated areas that cannot be seen and make demands that they have to remove buildings from their property or repair them or pay penalties, you're wrong. As this one world government moves forward, we need to stand between that, and we need to stop it. And that's what you're elected up there for, to make sure that this doesn't happen. So remember, you're sitting in that chair. Our tax dollars pay for the lights on in this building. It pays for your security that's sitting in the backpack here, and it pays you a small salary. Even though it's a small one, you get something. But you're here to represent the people. You're of the people and by the people, not of the council and for the council. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Mary Ann. I'm from O'Fallon. After reviewing the updated international codes, I still have concerns about the freedom-crushing money grab. Some areas still had up to the 1,000 per day, even if it's 500 a day, 250 for a stop-work order, 100 for a permit expiration, and a dollar a page to convert plans to PDF. Adding insult to injury is the threat of imprisonment. This does not sound like the reasonable conservative St. Charles County I used to know. I had to laugh out loud at some of the codes. One in particular caught my attention. If you want to change the shape or size of a window, you need a permit. Are you kidding me? You must think St. Charles County residents are knuckleheads that need to be saved from themselves. If someone has carpentry skills, they can handle this one. If they don't have carpentry skills, they hire someone who does. Government needs to stop being the cradle-to-grave nanny state. We are being allowed to change light bulbs and light fixtures without a permit as long as they aren't moved. The same thing goes for faucet fixtures. You can change those without a permit as long as they're not moved. Can you see how insulting this sounds? We are being treated like third graders instead of tax-paying citizens. Do you really think we would do something unsafe and depreciate our own homes? Of course, we wouldn't. It reminded me of the government and their green energy oligarch comrades' idea of replacing the old outdated light bulb with the smart light bulb. The smart light bulb has an awful yellow or blue, bright blue shine. It's expensive. If dropped, you have to have a hazmat suit to retrieve it due to the dangerous mercury. Then comes the dilemma of how to dispose of the toxic waste. Should we put it in the recycle? Probably not. Should we put it in the trash? Probably not. Should we contact the EPA? I'm not going to do that. The government creates problems where there aren't any. But if we follow the money, we know why something is being pushed. This is only the beginning. It will get more intrusive and more expensive every three years you continue to update these codes. The price of St. Charles County homes will be out of reach for young people and retirees. We will be able to do very little with our own private property without government's permission. It will be impossible for young do-it-yourselfers to refurbish an old dilapidated home into their dream home. They won't be able to pay all the fines and the possible jail time. Most of those people do a favor to the neighborhood when they take a diamond in the rough and turn it into a gem it was meant to be. Many complete the work under the watchful eye of someone with experience. There's a house on my way home I've been admiring, the work of a young couple. When I first saw the house, I felt sorry for them and thought it was such an ugly duckling. The next time I drove by, I couldn't believe the striking transformation. They are proving the value of my neighborhood. This reminded me of my husband's in my first home we bought. It was the armpit of the neighborhood, but a nice neighborhood. The house had been foreclosed and empty for over a year. My talented husband turned it into a beautiful home. The neighbors were thrilled, and so were we. We were able to almost pay that house off and build our current home with very little out-of-pocket.
Thank you for your speech.
And I ask you not to vote for this. Do something good for us, the citizens.
Thank you for your speech.
Carol Pitzer.
Hi. So last week, my councilwoman, Mikey Lum, assured me that my home and my septic field would be okay under these new codes when I sell. I asked for that in writing, and he advised me to call the community development. I called Anisha, who transferred me to Christina, who told me that if I was to sell my home, that I would need to get a third-party inspection on my septic and submit it to the county. By the way, my husband and I own over three and a half acres that we had our home built on according to code. Anisha did not know the newest addition of the bill, if the bill would, codes would affect me or not. She said I would have to speak to Sandy May to find out and to get in writing if I would be grandfathered in. Sandy May's voicemail would not accept messages, so I left a message with Christina for Sandy. Sandy has not returned my call yet. Christina told me that I would need to speak to Jared Aggie, Director of Code Enforcement, to get it in writing and notify that if I am a homeowner, that I would be grandfathered in when I sell, that I would not have to meet the final edition of Bill 4475 building codes. I left a message for Jared to call me. Jared has not returned my call yet. Councilman, I need to ask you if you honestly feel these codes are constitutional. Our founders believed in and intended limited government, very limited. Also, I hope that the county does not violate our Fourth Amendment rights enforcing these codes. There is a statement granting right of entry to the county inspectors, meaning the county claims the right to be able to enter our property anytime to inspect it. That is a direct violation of the Fourth Amendment prohibiting unlawful search and seizure without a proper warrant. We do know our Fourth Amendment rights. As I stated here two weeks ago, I am asking the county, the council, what country these international codes originated in, who originally brought them to the councilman in 2009 and also in 2017, how these new codes are going to affect me personally, exactly what fees the county wants to charge, and what other penalties, such as misdemeanor, which has been mentioned already, could be involved, and why the council thinks they have the right to legislate this without the approval of the homeowners. And with all the opposition represented at every meeting. Lastly, I don't appreciate seeing Councilman Joe Brazel, who is asking legitimate questions and making sure the truth is being presented, being admonished, when I see him working very hard to do the right thing for the residents of St. Charles County. In fact, that is why I'm asking you to do what I am asking you to do. Start listening to us and do the right thing.
Good evening, councilmen. My name is Brittany Tolly, and I am also against 4475. I would like to thank you for your patience because it would just be easier for all of us not to have to go over this again, but I'm very thankful that you all are respectable family men. Are most of you fathers? Yeah, even grandfathers? Let's say your child has a construction project in school, and let's say they make it wrong. Would you give your child a misdemeanor for messing up on a construction project? Of course not. Of course not. Giving your child a misdemeanor for something silly would be the same charge as what has already been addressed. I'm not going to go over it again, but having paint peeling off of your house, that's a misdemeanor charge. And now, all of you have the paper of the misdemeanor that is in the regulations and what is already considered a misdemeanor here in Missouri. That is equating paint peeling off our house to things such as sexual assault and DWIs. It's the same charge. It's beyond our comprehension. But I would like to remind you, gentlemen, that you are kind of like the parents who are overlooking neighbors and family members here in this county. You have authority that we don't, and we are asking you, we're beseeching you, to take your authority and to do what is right for everybody because we're all in this together. When we pass something that is way beyond us, it's going to affect you as much as it affects us. And we almost, you know, we almost asked that we would go to your homes first because you were the leaders, and we would inspect your homes first to make sure that there's nothing awry in your homes so that you can be the examples for us as the citizens of this county. If the fines are going to stay in place, then the money should be allocated to something that is completely unrelated to the council. It should be sent to homeless shelters. It should be sent to something that is unrelated because otherwise, if the council or if anything governmental is taking the money, then once again, it appears to be another infraction. It appears that there's more, you know, gaining money from the people who are living here, taxes, you know, regulations, laws, just stripping us of everything, and it's not doing us any good. Because if we have to pay fines to the council, then how are we going to pay the money to fix what is broken? Why don't we reallocate the money? Why don't we send the money to fix what's broken as opposed to fix something that's not? Three people already brought up the Fourth Amendment, as you have heard, and we would like to ask you, you know, to be going over these laws yourselves for us so that we don't have to do the homework for everybody else. You know, we're in this together, and so I would ask you to table this bill once again, and let's get to a place where we can all agree on everything that we're doing here. Thank you.
Thank you, Brittany.
Dr. Griffiths.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for letting me speak, and thank you for making the exception so that I could speak because I was a little late for the meeting. I think we've kind of hit on the Agenda 21, the UN Agenda, and I humbly request that everyone here and in the room read Agenda 21. It leads to America that is literally submitted to an international government, a global government. I went through some of the documentation of the IBC, is what we call it, and I really didn't see where it makes living in St. Charles County any safer. If you think of the building that was just burned in England, that was built according to the IBC, and it was also adhered to for environmental standards, and many people died there. Voting for and approving St. Charles County to fall under the IBC is a costly proposition for the taxpayer. It's regressive in nature. And what I mean by that is that because it's regressive, the poor person pays as much as the rich person. Their income is not considered when they're penalized or when they have to do an upgrade. That's a regressive code and aggressive tax, kind of like buying a gallon of milk. The bottom line is, if you follow the money, you will see that it causes and produces more revenue. In the Army, we always say, "Be quick and be gone," and I'll try that right now. The IBC means more government, more control, more oversight, more revenue, resulting in more costly government. And it will force America to be submissive under a global government. I request that this be tabled today, that it be not approved, voted against, and not revisited. Thank you very much for your time.
Eric Peaslee.
I received my time.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Kathy Lenahan. No, I'm sorry. That subject is...
So a new topic.
It's a new topic.
Hey!
Well, it's a new topic with the same kind of flavor. I just wanted to tell you all, I am not unique, and I am not special. I know that. So I have a feeling that there's a lot of people in St. Charles County that are just like me. Last week, I got a phone call from a St. Charles County inspector, residential inspector. He needed to come and inspect my air conditioner, had never been inspected after the permit was pulled. This air conditioning unit was installed a year ago, and no one has been to inspect it. So he came, and while he was there, I said, "Well, this is great. When are you going to do the furnace that was installed six months before that?" "Oh, it's not on my list." "What are you going to do about the water heater that was just installed three months ago?" "Wasn't on my list." So I called the county, and I asked him, "Hey, I got an inspector that's coming trying to inspect all these things, and he doesn't have these two other items that he should be inspecting as well. How is it that he doesn't have it? How many others are out there?" She told me, the individual told me, that there was a report that was run in the county and that they are following up on all the uninspected permits, open permits. Again, I am not special. I am not unique. How many other people out there have open permits that haven't been inspected? Now, I learned tonight that perhaps maybe there's only two inspectors. I don't know how in the world you expect with 8,000 pages of new codes that you're going to be able to do all these inspections if you can't even do the ones from a year and a half ago. That's it. I'm not unique, and I'm not special. There's a lot of people just like me. Thank you, gentlemen.
We have a new topic. Dennis Wiss.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hopefully, this works. If someone... Good evening. I'm Dennis Wiss. I'm the Airport Director of St. Charles County. I'm also the Chairman of the St. Charles County Veterans Best Practices Working Group. I'd like to remind everyone tonight, it's not working, but...
There it is. Yeah, it is.
Okay, stop. Be good.
We'll get to it. Hang on.
I'm technologically challenged. But...
You want to turn it sideways?
Turn it sideways?
Just one turn.
Other way. Other way.
See, I told you.
Keep going.
Does this count against my time?
Hey!
There we go. Okay. Thank you.
He's used to seeing things overhead from an airplane. So there you go.
So just real quick tonight, Wednesday, myself and several other members of the Veterans Group will be collecting worn and damaged flags, like this one, that are no longer suitable to be flown in front of businesses, houses, wherever they might be flown. My goal is to collect 500. We've already collected over 60. I would urge everyone, if you've got a flag in your garage, down in your basement, if it's been sitting there and you don't know what to do with it, bring it to us. We're going to collect them. And then in September, the VFW is having a flag disposal ceremony, and Old Glory will be put to rest the correct way. So anybody, come by Wednesday, and we're going to keep this going. This is our first drive-by collection, if you will, but we intend to do the drive-by collections yearly, and we're going to put boxes, we hope to put boxes, in front of the admin building at various county facilities so people can just come by and drop off Old Glory through the year, and then we'll dispose of it correctly. So if anyone has an old flag, please bring it by Wednesday. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
We have a new one. It's on a zoning proposal. It doesn't mention which one.
Hello, gentlemen. Thanks for having some time with us tonight. I'm going back to 4475 on my notes, so I just wanted to put my two cents in. I've been a lifelong resident of St. Charles County. St. Charles County has been very, very good to myself and my family and people I grew up with, and there is anywhere where I would rather be than here tonight, but I feel compelled to come here and speak about this zoning, 4475. And it just seems that unincorporated stakeholders of St. Charles County across the county are the ones that are going to be affected by the zoning improvements that you're trying to push through, and it seems that everybody's got their mind made up which way this is going to go, but I'm here to represent people out in the county, out in Highway T, out in Numeli, out in Forestelle, that see this as an infringement upon our rights as Americans. Thank you.
This is on Bills 4483 and 4484.
Good evening, gentlemen. Thanks for the opportunity to speak to you again on this matter of the Harris House. Two weeks ago, I spoke about the reasons why I don't want to live next door to the Harris House, which is a drug and rehab facility, so I won't go over all those points again. However, how can a special use permit be given to build a drug and rehab facility in a residential zone? It's not a church or a school. Secondly, the Planning and Zoning Board felt that a traffic study was needed and has to be done before they would approve, you know, this bill. to be done before they would approve, you know, this bill. And the road that they want to build on is South River Road, which is actually not a road that is up to any codes in St. Louis County. Thirdly, has engineering study been done on the sinkhole that is on this property? And this property right now is on a septic tank and the sewer is not leading up to the property and who is going to pay for the sewer to get to that property? Because I don't think that they're going to use a septic tank for this big building with all the 40 people that'll be living there. Thank you.
Thank you.
On the same subject, Joy K. Ebest?
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Joy Ebest and I own a property at 2516 South River Road and I just want to speak in support of the Harris House being built on South River Road. It is something that is needed by the community and I speak as a person that could not find this kind of help that was needed five years ago and the person died from a drug overdose and it wasn't necessary had we have known about this type of facility. It is needed. The epidemic is much worse now. Thank you.
Thank you.
New subject, Arnie Deanoff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council. Arnie A.C. Deanoff, public advocate and county resident. At last meeting, two weeks ago, comments from my councilman, Joe Cronin, who is my representative on the council, and I am the constituent, was wrong, irresponsible, and highly unethical. I should never be treated like a second-class citizen in my own county council chambers that we all pay for. I hope that there is never an episode like what happened two weeks ago after my comments when you have a 50-plus-an-hour plainclothes fugitive county police detective who was supposed to be providing safety and security in the back of the room and protecting us, but no, he wasn't paying attention and protecting us. He was texting on his phone and playing games. I saw his weapon. I brought that to the attention of Mr. Keith Hazelwood. What's ever more alarming and concerning is when speaking to Mr. Hazelwood, the county attorney off to my right, Chris Hunt, who has no county supervisor experience, who is now all of a sudden promoted from an officer to a captain in a $60,000 pay raise, gets in my face. Now, where's the professionalism? The conversion from the Sheriff's Department to a police department promised professionalism and high ethics. Where's the education experience of Mr. Hunt? Mr. Hunt was placed on administrative leave over three years ago. He was not allowed to carry a weapon or have any jurisdiction or duties for two and a half years.
Mr. Deanoff, if you have issues with an individual, I would ask you to take that to their supervisor. If you have issues with the administration, can you stick it to the administration and not single out individual employees like that?
Sure.
Thank you.
So, he was not provided a weapon. He was only one and a half years ago promoted to corporal and chief of staff to the police chief. Then, six months ago, was promoted to sergeant, skip lieutenant, and is promoted to captain over 30 other sergeants and lieutenants. Department policy, one cannot be considered for promotion to the next succeeding...
Mr. Deanoff, I just asked you to not talk about...
I'm talking about the promotion in general.
You're still talking about the individual, which I ask you not to do.
Okay, then let's move on.
Thank you.
Departmental policy, one cannot be considered for promotion to the next succeeding rank for a mandatory three-year period. This promotion came with an increase of $60,000, was political in nature. Moving on, in my last comments about Jared Agee, who worked for the City of O'Fallon in November. He got the O'Fallon City Council to pass a hot water tank heater inspection fee of $75 and HVAC air conditioning and heating fee of $100 to O'Fallon citizens. A sprinkler system is now on the tap for a $50 permit fee and a black test requirement of $50.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The last one we have is Gerald Keven.
God love you. Thank you so much. That, that brings us to the end of public comments?
Yes, sir.
All right. Good day. Thank you all for your comments. Or a report from the county executive?
Not this evening.
And we are rolling right along to consent agenda. Any items to be removed from the consent agenda or do I have a motion to approve?
Motion for approval is submitted second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Consent agenda is approved. We move down to Resolution 1705.
Resolution number 1705, sponsored by council as a whole. Resolution authorizing the offering for sale of special obligation bonds of St. Charles County, Missouri.
Any questions or comments about this resolution? Seeing none?
Bill for final passage, oh, I'm sorry. The roll.
She's in a hurry, man.
Resolution authorizing the offering for sale of special obligation bonds of St. Charles County, Missouri. Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Resolution 1705 passes. Councilman Brazel brought to my attention, and I'm moving a little bit too fast, and Ronald R. Henderson is our new director of facilities management. Mr. Henderson, would you stand up? Thank you very much. We wanted to welcome you aboard and we look forward to great things from you.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for joining us. I apologize for overlooking that. That was my mistake. Thank you, Mr. Brazel, for bringing that to my attention. We move on to bills for final passage. We are at bill 4482.
Bill number 4482, an ordinance granting conditional use permit CUP 17-04 for boat and recreational vehicles storage to Keven Brothers Storage LLC, property owners, and Gerald Keven applicant.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Cronin?
I would like to amend bill 4482 and replace with substitute bill 4482.
Motion is made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second is made. Any discussion?
I have, I'd like to add an amendment to that amendment, not to the substitute. The substitute passed, right?
We just introduced the substitute. We're on discussion of the substitute right now.
All right. I gotta add something to it, though.
Can't.
Mr. Councilman, you need to do that before you vote on the substitute. You need to amend the substitute that's been introduced on the floor so that your amendment is made before the council votes on it.
Okay, so I make the amendment now? Okay. Mr. Keven brought to my attention that there were some residents that called and they were concerned about the berm. They wanted it to be covered up a little bit and he agreed to do the berm in the front on Highway Z, which is, thank you for doing that. He'll continue the berm. There's this facility there. And then on Buckner Road, it's kind of a hill, so they can't really do a berm there, but I want to change, the white pines can't be, it says 10-foot on center. They're too big of a tree to be that close together, so he suggested 15-foot, right, Jerry? And that's more reasonable. So, I'd just like to exchange that 10-foot to 15-foot. So, that's my motion.
I'll second the motion.
Motion is made in second?
Question?
Yes, sir.
Can we do that with the new, with the new ordinance?
Yes.
Standup change?
Yes. There is an exception to the bill that was recently adopted with respect to amending the evening and passing the bill the same evening. One of those exceptions deals with Chapter 405-related bills and this is, this is a conditional use permit.
Thank you, sir.
Part of Chapter 405.
Klinghammer exception, 2D, 1D, pardon me.
Okay. Thank you.
So, I understand your amendment correct and you know that you want that named after you?
Yes.
Klinghammer care. There we go.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Jerry, I think, thought he might be able to speak to the bill and whether you want him to or not, we may need to because the, our sense of direction may have failed us in drafting this bill. Jerry, we've got a reference to the berm going north along Highway Z.
That is correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
I saw an aerial photo today and I thought, "Oh, my gosh, I think I've used the wrong direction." If it's correct, that's fine.
That is correct. The berm flowed north on Highway Z.
Any further discussion on the amendment?
No.
All right, so the amendment's been made and seconded, Mr. Cronin?
Point of order, we're going from 10-foot on center to 15-foot center. Yeah. Yep.
Correct, and that is the only change on the amendment, correct? We're just spacing the trees out five feet further.
Yes.
Yep.
And you're good with that, correct?
Yes, I am.
I took that by the shaking of your head, so I'm good like that. All right. All those in favor of this amendment?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, the amendment is accepted. Any other discussion on this bill? All right, so we have a motion made in second on this bill. All those in favor of this bill being accepted?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All right, now we can call the roll and vote on it.
So, we are voting for the approval of substitute bill 4482.
Yes.
As amended.
As amended.
An ordinance granting conditional use permit CUP 17-04 for boat and recreational vehicle storage to Keven Brothers Storage LLC, property owners, and Gerald Keven applicant. Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Bill number 4482 has passed. We move on to bill number 4483.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to substitute bill 4483.
Excuse me.
John, Kim, we have to read it first.
I need to read the title first. Bill number 4483, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the County of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from R-3A, single-family residential district with floodway fringe and floodway overlay districts to R-1E, single-family residential district with floodway fringe and floodway overlay districts as per application CUR 17-02.
Mr. White?
I'd like to amend bill number 4283 and replace it with substitute bill 4383.
A motion has been made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion on this bill?
Councilman, just to clarify, I know there was a substitute bill that came out in your packet, but Councilman White, I believe, is referring to the substitute that was laid on your desk earlier and the only difference between the one you had before and the current one on 4483 is that on page three, the date, October 31st, 2017, has been amended to April 30th, 2018 to comport with the contractual arrangement between the parties.
Any further discussion on this matter? All those in favor accepting the substitute?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, we'll do a roll call vote on 4483.
Our final approval, substitute bill number 4483, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the County of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from R-3A, single-family residential district with floodway fringe and floodway overlay districts to R-1E, single-family residential district with floodway fringe and floodway overlay districts as per application CUR 17-02. Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Bill number, substitute bill 4483 has passed. We move on to bill 4484.
Bill number 4484, an ordinance granting conditional use permit CUR 17-02 for a convalescent home institution to Zimmer Family Properties LLC and River Bluff View LLC, property owners, and to Harris House Foundation.
Any questions or comments on this bill?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to offer a substitute, I'd like to amend bill 4484 and replace it with substitute bill number 4484.
Motion's made?
Second.
Second. Any discussion on this?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, and again, the only difference between what you received in your packet on this one is that originally in the packet, there was a deadline of October 31st in this bill and that has been removed because this is the CUP and it dies naturally if they haven't used the CUP. Two years from the date the bill becomes effective.
Any further discussion? Mr. Cronin?
I'd like to welcome the Harris House. Unfortunately, I'd liked it better if we did need a place like the Harris House, but with the opiate crisis that we have right now, this, this facility is going to save lives and that's the bottom line, okay?
Any other discussion? All those in favor of accepting substitute bill 4484?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Substitute bill has been accepted. Now, we need a vote on acceptance of substitute bill 4484.
Substitute bill number 4484, an ordinance granting conditional use permit CUR 17-02 for a convalescent home institution to Harris House Foundation. Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Substitute bill 4484 passes. Good luck, folks. Hope all goes well. Move on to bill number 4485.
Bill number 4485, an ordinance establishing new traffic regulations and establishing penalties for violations thereof.
Any questions or comments on 4485? Seeing none?
An ordinance establishing new traffic regulations and establishing penalties for violations thereof. Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Bill number 4485 passes. We'll move on to bill number 4486.
Bill number 4486, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the City of O'Fallon for allocation of funds for work associated with the construction of I-70 South Outer Road.
Any questions or comments on 4486? Seeing none?
An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the City of O'Fallon for allocation of funds for work associated with the construction of I-70 South Outer Road. Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Bill number 4486 passes. Move on to bill 4487.
Bill number 4487, an ordinance naming the parkland located between Kisker Road and Pittman Hill Road as Baltic Creek Park.
Mr. Cronin?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to table this.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion on this?
Not at this time, me at least.
All those in favor of tabling the bill?
Aye.
All those opposed? The bill is tabled. We, that finishes up bills for final passage. Move on to bills for introductions, starting with bill forty-four eighty-eight.
Bill number forty-four eighty-eight, requested by Bob Schnur, sponsored by Councils as a Whole, an ordinance authorizing and directing the issuance, sale, and delivery of special obligation bonds, public safety projects, series two thousand seventeen of St. Charles County, Missouri, and approving certain documents and authorizing certain other actions in connection therewith.
Any questions or comments on this bill? Seeing none? Move on to forty-four eighty-nine.
Bill number forty-four eighty-nine, requested by Michael Holbert, sponsored by Mike Elam, an ordinance authorizing St. Charles County, Missouri, SCCMO, to vacate and release the storm water maintenance facility easements within Lot Two and Lot Five of the estates at Emerald Place, and authorizing the execution of documentation deemed necessary thereto.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to bill forty-four ninety.
Bill number forty-four ninety, requested by Craig Tarkowski, sponsored by Mike Elam, an ordinance amending the two thousand seventeen budget adopted as ordinance sixteen dash one zero four by making a supplemental appropriation to the road and bridge fund budget in the amount of one million one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars for the purpose of reimbursing consultants and contractors for construction and design cost.
Any questions or comments on forty-four ninety? Seeing none, we'll move on to forty-four ninety-one.
Bill number forty-four ninety-one, requested by Brent Statler, sponsored by Councils as a Whole, an ordinance amending ordinance ninety-three dash one sixteen, section one two zero point two ten of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSU CMO, relating to the meetings of the Board of Equalization.
Any questions or comments on forty-four ninety-one? Seeing none, that wraps up bills for introduction. Move on to tabled bills.
Mr. Chairman, I request to remove bill forty-four seventy-five from the table.
Substitute bill forty-four seventy-five, it's had a motion made to be removed?
Second.
Second is made?
All in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
The bill is on the table.
Off the table.
It's actually on the table. We just put it there. Now we need to take a motion to amend the substitute bill?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to, to amend substitute bill? Bill number forty-four seventy-five and replace it with amended substitute bill number forty-four seventy-five.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Yes, Mr. Cronin?
I worked on the substitute bill along with Mr. Klinghammer, and I think it's a much better bill than the current two thousand nine code. The threats of incarceration are removed, the penalties are cut in about half, and Mike can tell us more about that, so I think that's better. Some of the people that were talked about peeling paint, I actually got cited years ago for peeling paint on a rental house that I owned, and it's just so you know, this was in the wintertime. County sent me a letter, said, "You gotta take care of it." I called them up, said, "I can't get a painter in the wintertime." They said, "We'll give you ninety-day extension." They're pretty good to work with. They're not gonna find ya, and definitely with this change of this bill, they're not gonna find you for peeling paint unless you don't, you thumb your nose at the law. So, and long and short of it is, is the penalties have been reduced substantially from the current code we're offering in, we're working on. I work with the Home Builders Association, and the realtors, and several builders in the county to make sure that the codes were eliminated virtually, almost all the additional costs to the price of a new home in the county. And the Home Builders Association sent me an email this afternoon, they're good with it. So, I think we beat this horse to death. There are other things that we can do. Can we make the appeals process better? I think Mike will address the fact that if someone wins an appeal now, they get their money back, which is, I think, a good thing. The Ad-Oh Committee's gonna have some recommendations. This thing's a work in progress. We can tweak it as we go, but I want you to know, let me finish.
Folks, hang on. We do public comments and you get your speak, okay? Now it's our turn, so I would ask you to respect the fact that we're doing discussions, so keep your comments to yourself, all right? Thank you. Mr. Cronin?
Two weeks ago, I announced at this meeting, I was working on a substitute bill and asked for comments. I got zero. I got zero complaints from my district, from anybody, about this thing. I had a lady call me today, and she was from the city of St. Peters. St. Peters is under the international code, too. The people that, I don't think people understand, we've been under the initial, international code since oh-nine, and virtually every city in the county's underneath it. O'Fallon has adopted the fifteen code. So has Wentzville, so is St. Charles. We've actually made ours more accommodating than a lot of those cities. So, we've done the best we can on this. I'm ready to move on. We're not gonna make everybody happy with a code. I think we've done a hell of a job trying to make as much, many people happy as we could. Thank you.
Mr. Hammond?
I would just like to assure the audience, as an American, as a building official, an ex-building official, as somebody that's worked on the international building codes that has nothing to do with Agenda Twenty-One, and I understand Agenda Twenty-One, and I am totally opposed to it. I'm for what's right for Americans, and this bill has nothing to do with Agenda Twenty-One, and as far as your rights when it comes to somebody searching your property, it's never changed what the current law is. And I can tell you, a building inspector has been trained that, let's say somebody calls, complains about your house, if they cannot see it from the street, the only thing they can do is walk up your driveway, to your sidewalk, to your front door, knock on the door, and ask for your permission. If they don't do that, and you catch them on your property, you call the police, 'cause they're trespassing. And this ordinance doesn't take away any of your rights for search and seizure. I guarantee you that. That's all I've got to say.
Mr. Brazel?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. Joanne, I called you earlier today, and we didn't have the opportunity to speak on the one of, on the right of entry. Did you look at that to see what that actually stated? As far as what they're talking about is, can you?
On the property maintenance code, which is what it refers to, we can come, the property owner has an obligation to call us, or have their contractor call us, once a permit is issued, to come and inspect on the permit. We can come and inspect on the permit. We can get an administrative warrant from a judge if we have cause, and we can show that cause. And if we know a property is unoccupied, and we're able to prove that, we can go on the exterior of the property to cut grass.
When we're talking about building permits, they agree to having it looked at by, so, but you cannot go and entry into the facility without the property owner, or without somebody on board, or allowing that person to entry, correct?
Or a judge issuing a warrant.
Without a judge issuing a warrant. 'Cause we had that conversation today, and I was concerned about that issue. The, I think the thing that what you guys are missing to vote on is, and I'm not trying to be, say that condescendingly, but this is becoming, it's a philosophical situation, or an ideological situation, where we're sitting here, it's kinda like we're at the point where, well, if we pass it, maybe we'll know at that point what's in it. You know, it's kinda like the Obamacare situation, which is a total mess. And you guys know I've been opposed to this from the start, but if you read on to see some of this stuff, it says, two thousand fifteen International Mechanical Code, two thousand fifteen International Fuel Gas Code, two thousand fourteen seventy National Electric Code, two thousand fifteen International Plumbing Code, International Private Sewage Disposal Code, two thousand fifteen International, we didn't even begin to tap into what these changes are. I mean, we think we're addressing, and I will say, I gotta give staff some credit. I don't understand why we're doing this. I still haven't got any completely satisfactory answers why we're doing this, but they've addressed most of our concerns. But the problem is, is I have a full-time job, just like everybody else on this board up here, and there's no way in hell we know what we're passing. There's no way. We can't read all these things. We don't know what we're doing. And so, for that reason alone, it becomes a philosophical situation. It's, we're passing something based on other people's interpretations, or what they think isn't the best cause for the, it's for the safety of the people. That's nonsense. These offices, we're completely safe the way we are. So, I'm just telling you guys, we don't need this. It hasn't been proven we need this. There's no reason why we're doing this, and it's just more bureaucratic regulations, and it's complicated, and it's just not needed. I don't know why we just don't table it and stick with what we have, and then look at what we have, 'cause we can't even figure out the codes we have now accurately. And so, and I'm not trying to be insulting anybody, it's just not the right thing to do. It really isn't. It's the wrong thing to do. So, again...
I think we, we worked really hard as a council to accommodate as many of the changes that were pointed out, that there was mistakes on, or that was going too far, or that the cost-benefit analysis didn't really pan out that it was a safety issue. There's issues that are safety issues in there, they're expensive to remediate. We looked at it, we looked, we talked to the builders, we talked to electricians, we talked to plumbers, we talked to people that actually have to live by these codes, and I think we made a pretty informed decision. I know Mr. Brazel looks at things differently than I do on this one, and that's okay. He doesn't believe that we understand what it is we're passing. We have looked at this thing many times. Several of us have made ourselves available to meet with people, to talk to people, to get better educated on the concerns about Agenda Twenty-One and Agenda Thirty. I think we've done that. You know, we have, we may, at the end of the day, not believe that it is as big a concern as some of you do. That's okay. We are going, the people on this board, and on this point, I know I can speak for everyone, we agree with you. We don't want outside influences having control and demanding of things that we do within our own county. We have the ultimate control to do those. We are the ones that are still, and we collectively, not we, the board, we collectively decide what parts of this we want and what parts we don't. That's why we've had multiple meetings on this. That's why we've had multiple amendments to the board, to the proposed two thousand fifteen code. It was amended several times, and not amended, but it was changed, to meet the needs of St. Charles County before it ever came to us. And, you know, do we need to communicate those changes, you know, in a better way? Yes, we do, 'cause the people didn't understand exactly what all those changes were. But I think that last count, there was over sixty changes that our building department made prior to coming to us to begin with. They recognized that there was things in it that we didn't need in St. Charles County. You guys pointed out more things that we didn't need in St. Charles County, and it is complicated. Do we understand absolutely every part of it? I think we, I think some people do and some don't. Many examples that were talked about tonight had to deal with the building maintenance code. That's not this. Peeling paint has nothing to do with the building code. Seems like it should. Seems like they're related. They're not. The only thing, the thing that ties them together is our house, but it is not. There's nothing in this about peeling paint, and whether or not that's a misdemeanor offense or not. That's the property maintenance code. Completely separate thing. There was a lot of concern about the penalties of not pertain, if you don't live up to the code, if you build it differently. That is the guideline that is given to the judges on what they can do, not what they will do. And that is a very big and separate part of why our government works in the United States. The whole separate, three branches of government, and the checks and balances that we all learned about in school, about, you know, why our democracy works here. Jared Aggie has no authority whatsoever to write out a statement that says, "You owe the county five hundred dollars because you didn't, you didn't use the right type of framing materials in the building." He can't do that. Only a judge can assign those penalties or fines. Then we have to look at it, and do they? They don't. It is not something that is imposed. If we have laws, though, that have no consequences whatsoever, then they're not worth the paper that's written on it at all. So, yes, there has to be rules and consequences if you don't follow them, but it's not for this board, or for county staff, to say what that penalty is. That's the judge. That's a whole different branch of government, and that's why it works here. Sorry to go off on a civics lesson, but I think that's important to note. Another thing that has been brought up multiple times is whether or not old existing homes, any house that's already in existence, is gonna be mandated that they bring it up to this two thousand fifteen code before it could be sold to someone else. The answer to that unequivocally is no. It is not. It is not a requirement by the government that you have to build, bring your old house up to the current code. That's simply a false, that is a false statement that got a whole nother area of concern and uproar over it. It is not part of the code, and never, as long as I'm on this board, and I'm sure I'm speaking for the other members, we will fight tooth and nail. That is, you can't impose new rules and make it retroactive to buildings that were built a hundred years ago, or fifty years ago, or ten years ago. We don't go retroactive and make it backwards. We simply don't do it. Now, is it a good idea on some things, if you're doing a major remodeling, that if you're remodeling your kitchen, to put GFI switches so that you don't get shocked if your mixer happens to come in contact with the sink? Yes, it's a good idea to do it. Is it required, though, to do that in order to sell your house? It is not. So, and again, we've talked about this, we've made good changes to it, and a lot of those changes were brought to us from you. You pointed it out, there was things that we needed to change. We did it, and I think that this final version that we have before us tonight is a good one. Is it perfect? Probably not. And if you find other things that we need to take a look at, then do so. We will take a look at 'em and come to a conclusion whether or not it's another change is necessary. So, thank you very much.
All right, so motion's been made, it's been seconded, discussion has been had. All those in favor of the substitute bill?
Aye.
All those opposed?
I think we need a roll call on, is that final passage?
We have to approve the substitute first, then we'll vote on it.
I'm sorry, I thought we were doing final.
We're good. All those opposed?
Well, this is better than the first piece of garbage, but I mean, so, yes.
Thank you for using garbage as opposed to the word that you were about to use. I appreciate that. So, with that all being said, can we call the vote?
Amended substitute bill number forty-four seventy-five, an ordinance amending chapter five hundred, building codes, and county building commission ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSU CMO, by adopting the St. Charles County amendments and modifications of the following two thousand fifteen international codes, building residential code for one and two-family dwellings, existing building, mechanical, fuel, gas, plumbing, private sewage disposal, energy conservation, fire, swimming pool and spa, and the two thousand fourteen National Fire Protection Association, seventy National Electric Code. Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
No.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Substitute bill forty-four seventy-five passes. That concludes all our table bills. We're on to announcements and miscellaneous. Any announcements or miscellaneous tonight?
We have a call.
Then I would entertain a motion for closed session.
Motion moved to closed session?
On pursuant to...
RS MO six one oh point oh two one, parentheses one.
Motion's been made?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We are in closed session.
That one needs a roll call, gentlemen, to go into closed session. Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Thank you.
Bill right on line two.
Hey, next time you're on TV, put a little makeup on your face. You look a little better. You look a little pale.
(laughter)
So we need a motion?
Motion to go back into open session?
I'd like to make a motion to go back into open session.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We are back in session.
Motion to adjourn.
I'd make a motion to adjourn.
Motion made to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We are adjourned.
Woo! Yay!